Hello everyone, I'm Jagadeen Kova with your host on yet another addition of special events and happenings and the goings on within the historic city of Tuskegee, Alabama. On the Tuskegee Television Network. Tuskegee, Alabama is what they have called, and I think Johnny Ford was the person that said this, "The largest small city within the United States of America." Tuskegee is the county seat and/or largest city within the county of Macon, which was Macon was founded in 1832, Tuskegee 1833. And we are here to bring you yet another addition of some of the things that have happened here in Tuskegee, historic Tuskegee. Today is going to be about education. And we are here with one and only a descendant of an important individual who did something educationally here within Tuskegee. And we are here today with Mr. Anthony Lee. Mr. Lee, thank you so very much for being with us today, sir.
Thank you, sir.
For doing this interview, taking time out of your busy schedule, sir. Thank you so very much.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Lee, most people would know the name Lee as face value. And you being Anthony Lee, the son of who?
Detroit Lee.
That was your father.
That was my father, and Hattie M. Lee was my mother.
And you were born where, sir?
I was born in Tuskegee Army Air Base Hospital on February 23rd, 1946.
Tuskegee Air Base Hospital.
That is correct.
Where was that located?
That was located out in Mitchell Village, Mitchell Mill.
Got it.
That's correct. I think it was called Sharp Field at one time.
Yes.
Right.
So, interesting, interesting facts right off of the bat. Most people did not realize and/or remember Sharp Field and the hospital from which you came into this world.
That's correct.
So that information is very important that that happened right here in Tuskegee, Macon County.
That's right.
Mr. Lee, or Anthony, if I can.
Please do.
Tell us something, and this is going to lead into what you did. Tell us something about your father, Detroit Lee. What did he do? In a nutshell, what did he do? What was this thing? What did he do?
Okay, Detroit Lee was born in Dangerfield, Texas, in 1916. When he finished high school, he wanted to get a college education. And he had read about Booker T. Washington and up from slavery. And he learned that Booker T. Washington said that if you could just make it to Tuskegee, you could get an education. So he hoboed here from Texas to come to the Tuskegee area and go to Tuskegee Institute at that time. Because education was number one in his family and the family that he had once he got old enough. So he came here to get an education.
You know, Mr. Anthony, you know, so many famous individuals are connected with Tuskegee. I'll give you one very quickly, and then you can espouse upon this even more. Rosa Parks was born within Macon County.
That's correct.
And they said that, history says that she would not rise out of that seat when a white man asked her to move in Montgomery, Alabama, and the bus boycotted in 1955. But Rosa was not tired. And the reason why she didn't move is because of what was indoctrinated within her.
That's true.
She heard her father, who was one of the chief litigators, with the Scotsboro Boys, helping them come to justice because they were falsely accused. I put you within the same venue. Your father did something in education where he had a lawsuit. And you and I have spoken earlier that education starts at home. And then the teachers build upon that. What did he do in the educational field? Didn't he have a lawsuit?
Yes, he did. My father had five children. I have three older brothers, one younger brother, and a sister. And he wanted to get the best education possible for all of us. In fact, my oldest brother was one of the first students to go to St. Joseph Catholic School that was here at one time, because that was a very, very good education. But about the time that I was in high school, or I was in elementary school, my father wanted us to get a very good education. And we were going to the public schools at that time. And every year, principals would come around to churches, appealing for funds for their schools and things like that. And he says, you know, "We're all property owners, and the money for the school system is from the property tax. Why won't we get in better education based on the property tax? Tuskegee is 90% black. So therefore, a lot of the money comes from the black people. But why would the principals and teachers have to come and beg for money or appeal for money every year?" So he says, "We have to do something better than that." So he wanted us to get a basic, good education, and therefore you have to have good funding for education. So this is why he thought that since we were the predominant population here, we should get a much better education than what we were getting. We were having secondhand books and things like this. So he says, "Well, we had thought about separate but equal in the Brown versus Board of Education case." So he said, "Well, why can't we have a much better education, a much more equal education here in Tuskegee?" So this is why he got with attorney Fred Gray and asked him about having a case of getting a better, equal education here in Macon County. At that time, Fred Gray was handling the case of the Jeremander case, Gomillion versus Lightfoot. And so they had to discuss that because my father could be very impatient. And this was probably during the time that that was starting. And attorney Gray said, "Well, Mr. Lee, if you will allow me to finish this case of Gomillion versus Lightfoot, I'll take up your case. And if you do that, I'll let you name the case after your kid." And it was my name at that time. So that's how it became Anthony Lee and Others versus Macon County Board of Education.
Wow, that's heavy. That's actually heavy. And so now springboarding from that statement onto this one, onto this pool of information that you're going to share. The Tuskegee Public School downtown Tuskegee was all white at the time. And the citizens, one of them being your father, and sharing the ideas for which you said about wanting his family and the other families in the
That's correct.
City, black families, to receive a great education. Not that if they was at an all-black school, but the point was this was a public school, and they were not allowed to attend that institution.
That's correct.
And so now, in September of 1963, the black students or African-American, if you would, sued the Macon County Board of Education to integrate Tuskegee Public School so that blacks can matriculate and/or go to school at Tuskegee Public. Mind you that nine years earlier with the Brown and Board of Education, nine years earlier, still Tuskegee Public was not integrated. So now, our black parents are saying, "We have to integrate this school because we want to have the same rights as anyone else has." So the first day at school where it was supposed to be integrated, then-governor George Carley Wallace
That's right.
George C. Wallace
That's correct.
He sent the state troopers there. He closed the school down, and the opening day did not allow the students to attend or go to school there.
That's correct.
There were 13 students. I don't know if they were handpicked or if they volunteered, and this is where you're going to come in. 13 students were to integrate Tuskegee Public Schools. And ladies and gentlemen, a history maker, he is one of the 13. Tell us something about those times and goings on, being one of the 13 students, really why it was one.
That's correct.
Our current mayor, the Honorable Lawrence Hager, was not one of the first, but he did matriculate in those rough times.
Yes.
Tell us what was going on. Were you there when the state troopers there? You saw the state troopers?
Yes. That morning, the 13 of us got aboard a school bus and was bused to the school. And soon as we got in the area of the school, we could see state troopers all around the school. Let me backtrack just a little bit. When we knew that this was going to be integrated or desegregated at that time, the citizens of Macon County got together and they talked, they talked about it, and it was planned to be a peaceful integration process. But George Wallace at the time saw fit to do others. Now, you know, at one time, George Wallace ran for governor, and he was defeated for governor by a guy named John Patterson.
That's correct.
And he said that John Patterson outniggered him. So he would not be outniggered again.
So, which means that he got support from the black vote. That's what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. But on that first day of school, he came and he sent the state troopers, and we were not allowed to go to school that day. We were sent home that day. But right after that, our lawyer, Fred Gray, went back to court and got it so that we could attend school. But at this time, all the white students began to leave with state support, because the governor had people collect funds to form the private schools. And that's when private schools was first formed around this area in the state of Alabama. So we were not allowed to go to school that day, but Fred Gray got it so that we could come back to school here. And so it was about maybe another couple of weeks when we came back to school here, but by that time, all the white students had left. And so then they said, "Well, we cannot support this school with just the black students." So they closed Tuskegee Public School at that time and sent us home again. So we went home again, but we had some brilliant lawyers. Fred Gray was a brilliant lawyer. So he decided, well, the governor could close the school because he is the ex-official head of the Board of Education. So he could override anything that the local boards of education do. And because of that, Fred Gray says, "Well, ex-official head of the Board of Education, we can enjoin him and perhaps desegregate the other schools in the county." So then we separated. It was 12 of us at that time. One had gotten put out because they said he whistled at a white girl. We divided into six, six and six students, six students each. Six went to the school in Shorter and six went to the school in Noda Soga, because those were the only two other white high schools in the county. And so that is what we did then. I was one of the ones that was selected to go to the one in Noda Soga, and we did that because Noda Soga at that time was known as sort of a real racist segregated town. And it was three senior boys, a junior girl, and some sophomores going to Noda Soga. And so we did that because the boys wanted to be where the trouble was going to happen, if there was any trouble. And the other students went to the one in Shorter. On the first day that we got to the school in Noda Soga, the mayor got on the bus this time and closed the school because he said if any other students went to that school, it would be a fire hazard. So we could not go to school there. But again, Fred Gray went back to court and got it and joined that we could even go to school there. But now, as a result of this Lee versus Macon County Board of Education case, Fred Gray was able to desegregate all of the public educational schools in the state of Alabama that were not already under some kind of legal action. Because since the governor was ex-official head of the Board of Education and everything came under him, then that is why they could desegregate all the schools, all the education in the state of Alabama.
You know, everything that you're saying, everything that he just said, and other things that he knows, and most Tuskeagians know this, and we want people on www, the worldwide web to know is this. He mentioned the name of Fred D. Gray, the attorney Fred D. Gray, who just received the highest award that an American citizen can receive from the current President Biden here in the United States of America. And we are within, this interview is coming from the Tuskegee City Square. And right behind me is the Honorable Fred Gray's, the Gray Law Firm is right behind me. Behind me to my right is the courthouse, the Macon County Courthouse, where it is one of two courthouses in America that has, you know, on the side of the buildings, you see dragons or you see gargoyles. But in Tuskegee or Macon County, it is one of two that has the dragon and gargoyle mixed together. To my left, with here within the city square of Tuskegee, is the Daughters of the Confederacy's statue. And there was a lawsuit allegedly that has been finished, but it is here, and we're sitting within history. Tuskegee is one of very few places that has Native American history, Indian if you would, Confederate history, Caucasian if you would, and African-American history, black if you would. Right here within this place, Tuskegee. And Mr. Anthony Lee, or Anthony Lee, that had just said to us that he was one of the 13 that had to integrate that school. And they was met by Alabama state troopers, not wanting them to attend. The thought process on that continues to this day with the critical race theory, whether they want to take or they want to extract African-American and/or black history out of the record books. But that's why Anthony Lee is here today, to let you know, or to inform you, that ain't no stopping us now.
No.
And I'm saying that as Americans, not blacks exclusively, but as Americans, our rights are just as every other citizen within this great country called America. And so, Mr. Lee, I'd like to ask you this. Did you attend school and go to classes with the white students?
We went to school with white students perhaps only one day. Because when they closed the school that first day, that is here in Tuskegee, all the white students just left.
It was 257 of them, I think.
Okay.
Yes. And they left, so one day.
They left, well, they did not come back to school here, because the school was closed. And they went to other schools in the county and other counties and things like that. And they started the Macon County Academy, and that's where they went also.
What was the atmosphere like on that one day with white and black being in a school now desegregated? Was there tension in the school?
That first day, there were no white students in the school, because they stayed home that day when they saw the state troopers and things like that. They stayed away. I did not come into contact with any white students at all.
You know, history being said, here's a bit of history. He mentioned the alternative school, he said, in Shorter and in other places here within Macon County. Here's a bit of history that most didn't know, that Tuskegee is so history prone. Whether it's going to be great history or not so good history, Tuskegee has it. Macon Academy was the school that was formed and/or built for the white student to attend so that he would not matriculate or go to school with the black student. And this is the historical part. Traditionally, the white family was made up of the husband, the white male, and the wife, the white female. The white female stayed at home, and the white male did all of the work at the job to support the family. Tuskegee is the first place where the white female or the white wife took on a second job, or took on a job to leave the home, to raise money and support the family, because now they could not go to school here in Tuskegee. So now, money has to be raised, so if they have to travel and to raise money for the then-Macon Academy to be an entity. And that was like a pebble thrown into a clear lake where everyone, all the white wives in America started to do similar things so that their children would have the, I would say, the comfort of going to school in a all-white setting. So yes, Mr. Lee, with that historical significance, tell me what Tuskegee was like during that time?
Tuskegee was a very progressive community. It was 90% black. We had everything that any community had. We had businesses, and all of these were owned primarily by black people. We had the VA Hospital. In fact, we had three hospitals at that time. The Macon County Hospital, which was predominantly a white hospital, John Andrew Hospital, which was on the campus of Tuskegee Institute at that time, which is Tuskegee University now. And then the VA Hospital, and it was built here because during after World War I, World War II, they had to have a place for black patients to come to a hospital, and white doctors did not want to treat them. So they formed the VA Hospital here in Tuskegee because it was in conjunction with Tuskegee University, Tuskegee Institute at that time. And so we were a thriving community, very well-educated. A lot of people here, we the professors, doctors, lawyers, business people. And so we were
Politicians.
Politicians, very well-educated people. And this is the stock, and this is the route from which I came, you know? And so this foundation was set, and we had to, we were inspired to be the best that we could be.
And you know, you are, I've heard so many stories about what Tuskegee was like and the things that happened in Tuskegee. I mean, I heard that when Tuskegee Normal and Industrial and Tuskegee Institute, currently Tuskegee University, had graduation, they would let, all of the county schools would be closed, and everyone would come to the graduation. And they said that all of the ladies would wear white.
That's right.
And it was such a beautiful sight.
And it was on Mother's Day.
That's correct. Mother's Day every year, the Tuskegee graduation occurred. But tell us, you spoke of businesses. Do you remember that the first-owned, first black-owned Holiday Inn? Where was it located?
Right here in Macon County.
How about Charles Bell? What did he?
Chevrolet dealership.
The first black to own
That's right.
A major dealership.
Also, another was Johnson, Cliff Johnson. First black Cadillac dealership, right here in Macon County, Alabama. In fact, the Holiday Inn was owned by my uncle, because my uncle already had businesses here. He had a cleaning and haberdashery, and predominantly black. And so he owned the Holiday Inn here.
I don't want to say this to make, say that this business was such a big deal or such a less of a deal, but how about the Chicken Coop? It's world famous.
Thomas Reed. One of the first black representatives from Macon County. And he fought, in fact, I had some of that chicken before it became the Chicken Coop. I had a summer job, and me and my cousin went out and worked with Thomas Reed at a restaurant that he had. And he cooked some chicken for us. He says, "How you like that chicken?" That chicken was delicious. That chicken became Thomas Reed's Chicken Coop.
That's true. I've enjoyed some of that chicken too. They used to have something called, when I was a student matriculating at Tuskegee Institute, now currently Tuskegee University. Hey, let me have a student special. That was a leg and a wing and some fries for less than a dollar. Those were the days, and we would go there and just wear them out for the student special. You know, Tuskegee means a lot to people. Tuskegee is known worldwide, it's known, let me start, it's known locally, it's known statewide, it's known internationally and continentally here in America. What does Tuskegee mean to you?
Tuskegee means to me is home. I was born here, I was raised here, I was basically educated here. And it's a lot of pride being from Tuskegee. In fact, whenever I travel, I generally wear something with Tuskegee on it, because you get immediate attention, you get conversations, because people all around the world know about Tuskegee, because we've educated most of the veterinary doctors in the world, right here in Tuskegee.
75% in war. Black veterinarians come from Tuskegee, Alabama, Tuskegee University. Thank you, hats off to you for that. Name some of the famous people that you could just walk down the street and see in Tuskegee. One for me was Chief Alfred C. Anderson. He taught the airmen how to fly. You saw him sometime, didn't you?
That's right. That's correct.
You saw others?
I saw others. Sammy Young was one. I went to school with him. He was about a year or two older than I am, but I went to school with him. Thomas Reed was another one. Fred Gray was another one. Clay, what was his first name? Which one of the first black representatives?
George.
George Clay, that's correct. And so you were just, a lot of doctors here.
Calhoun.
Calhoun, Campbell, the
Dow.
Mitchell, Mitchell Dow.
Vance.
Vance, my neighbor. He's my neighbor. So it was a lot of famous, well-educated, famous doctors, very good doctors, from right here in Tuskegee. I'm going to tell you another thing about Tuskegee we haven't talked about before is, you know, we have all this thing about Jeremandering before now, and they're trying to carve out districts in all of these states that Republicans are doing to make it more or less white areas. The first Jeremandering case was right here in Tuskegee.
Right here in Tuskegee.
It was called
In the square.
In the square. It was called Gomillion versus Lightfoot. My father was one of the plaintiffs in that case. At that time, the state legislature wanted to carve up Macon County so that there would be no blacks in the voting population. They did the boundaries, it was a 28-sided figure to eliminate most black people, and it was about like a dragon. And again, Fred Gray handled that case, and it went all the way up to the courts, and it was finally ruled that we could, we could vote in Macon County, in a predominantly black area.
So you know, I want to say one thing as we're getting close to our closing. You living it, seeing it, breathing it, smelling it, sleeping it, being in the timeframe during the civil rights movement era, a completely different thought pattern that you had. I think maybe you were thinking in such a way that you were restricted from doing things, but in Tuskegee, you didn't feel that restricted, did you?
Not at all. Not at all. To me, the sky was the limit. I mean, we could have, and our parents instilled in us, we could do anything that we wanted to do. We could have the best of everything, but we had to work for it. We had to strive for it, and that is what we did. Became pretty much accomplished people in our own rights, you know? Yes.
You know, this has been a thought-provoking interview, to see a descendant from an individual who was fully armed and ready, not with weapons of mass destruction, but with knowledge that he wanted not just his family and his children to receive the best education that they could possibly get, but for the entire county to be educated so that they could go on and do things and come back and reach back to make this great place we call Tuskegee a better place, not just for the family, but for all of those who have lived here and have come here. You know, Highway 80 came straight through Tuskegee. Most people want to know why Tuskegee doesn't have what it had then, because the big highway came straight through Tuskegee, and all of that traffic came with money, with people who were going to spend on gasoline and food and hotel stays and go to our shops to buy things. And And it was a different place then. But guess what? Tuskegee is still Tuskegee.
That's right.
We still have the history. We're going to make more history, because those who are listening, if you are interested in doing something for Tuskegee, coming to visit to Tuskegee, we ask you to come on. It's open for you and yours. Come on, and you can meet people like Mr. Anthony Lee right here. You can see the Honorable Fred D. Gray here. You can see Tuskegee University here, and all of the things that are going on here, and the omnience of what's happening in Tuskegee University. And so now, we're going to come to the closing remarks from Mr. Anthony Lee, a descendant who was in the first class of the segregation of then Tuskegee Public School at that time in 1963, during the civil rights movement. Mr. Lee, give us your closing remarks of what you want people to remember of Tuskegee, and remember what you are saying.
I mean, you see the cap that I'm wearing today? It's Auburn University, War Eagles. I and Willie Wyatt, who also integrated the school here with me, were the first two black undergraduates to go to Auburn University. I was the first one to go, go four years and graduate from Auburn University. So I'll tell anybody, Auburn grows now because I went there and made it so that Charles Barkley and all of these other people could go to school there, Bo Jackson, and quite a few others. And that's why they have a lot of money there, because those people come back and visiting, and now they got this world-famous football team, and stadiums, real big stadiums, and all this kind of thing, because of things like that. And to me, this was just a pleasure. It was a chore for a while, it was a challenge, but it was a pleasure doing all of this for our generation and for all to come.
Mr. Lee, or Anthony Lee
Anthony Lee.
You're close up with Mr. Anthony Lee because of the historical significance for which he represents. It has been our honor here at the Tuskegee Television Network to have you on record to say what you will have to say, and wish all of the students now within the school where white and/or black and all ethnic groups belong
Yes.
to get their education, and make sure that they do the best that they can, and the best that they should do, so that they can be honorable citizens and good citizens of this United States of America, because people like you, who've gone through things like that, and had great parents to instruct and teach you and instill within you some of the great things that you are now sharing with the world on World Wide Web. And so for Jesse Harris, director and cameraman of the Tuskegee Television Network, I'm Jagadee Culver. And so until next time, bye-bye.